Congratulations, Sam Ray.
Thank you. Okay, it is Wednesday, November 9th, 2022. A call in order.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One another.
Okay. So you haven't had much going on, so do you have any minutes or reports?
I do, I have quite a few. I've got the county clerk's October 2022 fees, auditor's revenue and expenditure report for October 2022, treasurer's October reconciliation report, and the sheriff's October 2022 fees. That's it.
Okay. Commissioner committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
So waste management district board meeting this afternoon, HBA general membership tonight, Cole County Chiefs Association meeting Thursday evening, Veterans Day Friday. And that's about it until next week.
Today, a meeting with Public Works talking about one of the projects in our five-year plan. Also today, Salute 23 meeting. Tomorrow, city Public Works meeting to talk about the multimodal project. Chiefs meeting in the evening. Friday, Veterans Day, there's an event with Representative Griffith at the chamber Friday morning. That's my calendar.
Okay. Tomorrow, we have a stormwater meeting right at 9:00, 9:00 a.m.
I don't think it's stormwater.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Not yet. Yes. And then Chiefs meeting. Friday, there is a 9:30 mass in St. Peters. Friday afternoon, Marilyn Smutsler passed. Her visitation is at Freeman's from 4:00 to 7:00, like prayer service at 3:15. And on a Saturday is the, from, at 11:00 a.m. is the funeral mass. So that's all I've got.
Pass ring down to Harry there. That's the Public Works.
Uh, commission comments. I was asked by Brian, which I don't even see him here, if we could move-
There he is, from the door.
Oh, there he is, he snuck in. The new server for Tyler Technologies. So being in a good mood, I said we would move that to the beginning.
You get the muscle with you, you get pumped right up to the top of the line. So with our conversion over to Tyler Technologies, there was some technological issues that came up. One of them was a server for the civil side of Tyler. So we either can get our own server or we can go in the cloud. So we're checking into that. But this is simply for the, it's for the system itself, CAD and for LARM script.
Correct.
So it's only 13,000, we can do that.
Yeah, so it's a much less expensive than what we thought it would be.
Yeah, it's a co-op here procurement.
And then the part of, part of this is also Tyler is, when we talk about the civil, part of the server problem is, we want to have Tyler host the civil side in the cloud. It's beneficial for both of us, he and I. It's beneficial to the, to the city because there's a, there's a public domain for that, and the city really doesn't want it attached to them. Brian really doesn't want it attached to them. So if we do it in the cloud, then there's no way for us to get interference. It would be an increase of 11,500 to our current maintenance agreement that we would have with Tyler Technology, raising it to $85,102. The current budget that we're looking at, I'm 137,000, right? I'm gonna say I'm close to 130,000 in the black, so I would have enough to be able to encompass that. But I would not ask you to change the budget because I know that you already sent it to the printer, so.
It can't be changed, right?
Yeah, so, but the money's there. But I would like to move forward with doing that in the cloud also as part of this, this program. And any other technology stuff, you have to ask Brian because I have told you everything I absolutely know about this stuff.
You said it like in a minute.
You went above and beyond there, I'd say. What did, this is part of what we were using the ARPA funds for, right?
That is correct, sir.
So where was this money coming from?
I was gonna take it out of contingency unless you guys want to use ARPA, which I'm good with.
I just thought that that, it's all part of the same project.
Plus, plus it causes Debbie a little bit of work, so. It's a win-win.
Makes her feel needed.
So you don't want to do it from ARPA? You didn't look at me staring daggers at me, but-
Yes, you did.
I saw the horns on the back of your head when you looked at John.
Um, no, what do you want to fit in the back?
There's still, and we, you know, we were blessed with another 50/50 from, that recirculated ARPA, was it ARPA money? Okay. Or it's called ARPA money now, maybe it was Carriage at one time, I don't know.
No.
But, so have we kind of allocated that 50/50, 50,000, 50,000?
Hasn't been determined where you want to put that yet.
Okay, well, I think we found a place to put part of the first, first 50.
I'm fine with that. That budget right there is just flawed though because of the 6.8 million.
6.5, yes.
6.5. I feel like there's plenty of room in there with that, so I'm good taking it from there, that's good, roll with it.
So, a motion in order? To, a motion to accept the pricing proposal from SHI? For a, the invoice is for 13,773.15 for the Power Edge R740 tailor-made instant saving product.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd ask for a second motion for the civil side to do the, in the cloud. And what I'll do is if you guys agree that it's okay, then I'll get a contract and bring it back up at the next. If you need the contract at the next commission meeting, I can bring it up. Or if you want me to just have Sam sign it, because it's his name, he's in trouble if it doesn't work out, so.
And what is that amount again?
It's gonna be an increase of $11,500 to my maintenance budget for 2023.
Well, we can handle that as we go through the budget, right?
Well, I'm gonna need to move forward with the civil, so they need to start making adjustments.
Is that ongoing maintenance?
Yeah, that'll be yearly maintenance.
Okay. That may have to be a question as far as the ARPA money.
Oh, no, I'm not asking for the ARPA money for that. I'm not asking for it. All but $5, I want $5 to come from ARPA.
Well, I mean, will, will we get a transfer or one of the paperwork? Handle it that way, the regular way of, we're gonna pay that out of?
I'm gonna pay that out of my 2023 budget.
Well, we haven't adopted that yet, so.
Well, but it's, it's part of the proposal for the Tyler Technologies that you guys have already approved, so it's gonna be an increase of $11,500.
I understand, but that budget's gonna come in front of us next week, and then we can, we can amend the budget to put it in there, right? It's a 2023 item?
Yes, it is.
I think that, that's my response is we'll cover, or final-
So then, I don't know where to go from this, so maybe I need direction from you guys then. I need to move forward with this, but if you want to wait and do the adoption, I'm okay with that. But that means January 6th is whenever we're gonna have to implement this, and I'm not gonna, I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna push our timeline.
So when are you talking about implementing? I guess I'm confused there, are you talking about getting this for '23? Okay, so you want to start tomorrow, so it's not '23, it's '22.
Well, it's gonna be my 2023 budget because we don't have to pay maintenance until the end of 2023. So that's when my maintenance, this maintenance payment will come due. So it's not gonna cost us anything right now. All you're doing is, is giving me permission to extend the maintenance contract to 85,100.
Right. I have a motion to extend the maintenance contract to 85,100 and have the sheriff proceed with the plan to increase that civil by 11,500.
Can we say 90,000 because this is my calculation, not Betsy's? So.
Yes, 90,000.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Second.
I have a-
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good job, Brian.
Why don't you just send Betsy out there, it'd be a lot easier.
90,005.
Send Betsy and Brian next time.
Okay, now we will go back to bids and contracts.
Mr. Presiding Commissioner, before we go there, could we, maybe at this point, although we could get this under another business, is we had an emergency meeting on Monday-
Oh, yes.
With respect to a meeting prior to the DOJ meeting that was held with the clerk and, and other parties at SOS, Secretary of State's office. So I don't have that language in front of me, but I think-
Let me go get it real quick?
Yeah, please.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I do have it, I do have it, yeah. Okay. The county commission called an emergency meeting on Monday, November 7th, 2022 to discuss, along with clerk, county clerk Coursemire, allegations by the U.S. Department of Justice of Americans with, American Disabilities Act, possible violations with voter machine accessibility at Cole County polling places. The commission and clerk additionally met with officials at the Missouri Secretary of State's office to discuss these allegations and the 2022 election process in Cole County. I guess I make a motion that we add this to our minutes of this meeting. So there's no question about the meeting, it was an emergency meeting, we didn't have time to advertise it. That's what occurred on Monday morning.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. We will go back to bids and contracts. Discussion and bid award of 2022-27 election equipment.
All right, so we bid out the election equipment for the county clerk's office. This included 31 scanners, 29 election machines, and 55 iPad's, plus their hardware, software, and maintenance costs. We had three vendors that submitted a response. We would like to do two separate bid awards on this, one for the iPads and then one for the scanners and machines. Our recommendation is, you guys have the bid tabs in front of you, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Our recommendation is to award the iPads to No Ink with the year one cost totaling 72,730. No Ink and Atkins were the only two that submitted a bid for the iPads. No Ink is roughly 23,000 less than Atkins, and No Ink is also less in the annual maintenance cost after year two. And then our second recommendation is to award the election machines to Atkins with the one-year cost totaling 244,333. Atkins and Elkins were the only two that submitted a bid for the election machines. Atkins is roughly 6,000 less than Elkins. It is also less in the annual maintenance cost for year two, which totals 15,675.
Question, Mr. Clerk?
Yes.
We discussed at one point the, the machines that we may or may not need with, because the vision impaired might be able to go to the same kind of approach that the military do? Did I get that right from you?
They were talking about it, but there's nothing-
There's nothing there.
The way I listen to Secretary Ashcroft, I don't think that's gonna happen.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that this includes the special machines for visually impaired-
Yes, there's-
That qualify under ADA for that requirement?
Yes, so it'll be 29 accessible machines, that's one for every polling place plus a spare. Then our scanners, we have 28 places, and our absentee, and then we have two spares for breakdown. Two extras.
Do we need more spares because we had?
Well, with the new machines, I would hope not, but you never know down the road. But Atkins has been very kind to bring us ones that we, if we need them. Like yesterday, they set up a spare machine because our two spares were used.
Yeah.
So they sent us up a spare one too, so they're, I don't-
I was just wondering if we need, instead of doing 29, maybe we do 30, just, I don't know, I'm-
It was very, yesterday was very unusual, we never had that many go down at one time, so I'm not sure what the issue was, but it-
The machines you have now have some age on them.
They have age on them, they're not as fast. As these new ones will be much faster putting the ballots in and stuff, so I don't, it's up to you guys. But normally, we wouldn't use two spares at elections, so it was very unusual, yeah. And I think the machines are more durable, they have battery backups, so if cords would get unhooked or anything, you could still use them.
Debbie, did you have something?
Keep in mind in the ARPA budget that we had, we were just looking at handicapped, so all that was in there was 86,972. Just a little way to understand this, is if you did all bid out of ARPA, you're looking at 317,063.
Yes.
317?
If you did the iPads with No Ink and then the election machines with Atkins.
So election machines, 269,620, and the No Ink, iPads are 72,730?
244,330.
Should be for the Atkins machines.
Okay, I was at the wrong line, thank you. And then where do we have these warranty, software, firmware, licensing, maintenance? We need to add that into there?
So the first year would be free, of course, and then after the second, the second year, the licensing and warranty would start. So with No Ink, it looks like they give us a three-year warranty on the iPads.
Then what's, do we gotta pay the warranty for the machines then?
Yeah, and the total for the after, after year one, we go to year two. So after that, it'll be the 15,675 for the warranty and the firmware license, all that.
For the scanners and the accessible machines?
Yes.
The computers would not have a warranty. You get a three-year warranty, but then after that, there's no warranty.
Currently, you're paying maintenance.
We are currently, 15,000 a year is what we're paying now.
Okay, so then we're adding 15,675 plus 8,200 for those items, the warranties and licensing, licensing, maintenance, and warranty.
So currently, we're paying 5,500 on the iPads, on our pole pads, and about 15,000 to our other machines, so.
Does Atkins warranty and licensing stuff, does that include the iPads? Do they need to back some of that out of there?
No.
Since the iPad warranty and stuff will be with No Ink? So Atkins didn't have any?
I don't think they had anything.
It says included in the price up above, but I'm just making sure I'm following that.
I'm not sure they bid warranty and licensing, I'm not sure, I didn't, I didn't.
I don't think they did for after, for warranty on the iPads, just for the year one.
I'll have to go back and look.
We're not looking to put warranty, continuing warranty or maintenance into the ARPA numbers, are we?
No, I wouldn't think so.
I mean, you already have it.
One-time cost put in, that's correct. But I was just trying to follow this along because it's 8,280 into 7395 on the Atkins. But if they included some kind of warranty service on their iPad bid, then they should back that out of there. Because 8,200 of that-
It wasn't in these.
Part of No Ink. We're paying 8,200 for No Ink for iPad, you know, I'll be able to back that out of Atkins bid, depending on what it was.
Well, they had it separated, so this was just for the machines, and then the iPad was on a different bid, I believe, wasn't it? Yeah, I think it was different.
That's all under the total bid for the licensing, maintenance, and warranty. Annual cost is 8,200 under No Ink, that's iPads only. 15,675 for Atkins was the iPads and the machines, is the way I'm reading it, and that may not be correct.
iPads weren't in that, no?
I don't think, that was my mistake, I don't think it should have been in there. It needed its own line item for it. The Atkins was just for the election equipment, and then the No Ink is just for the iPads, that 8,200 on both of them.
All right. Yep, I'm, I'm good with as long as you're, you've got the numbers and you're clear with them.
Yeah.
You have the numbers in front of you, didn't make them up?
What was your total, Debbie, that you came up with, two?
That's for the iPads and the election. So I don't know if you want to split it up and do the iPads with No Ink and then election equipment, do two separate awards.
So tell me if this is right, what we're looking for is to do a motion to award the iPads to No Ink in the amount of 72,730, and the election machines to Atkins in the amount of 244,333.
Yep.
Okay, that's my motion then.
Second.
Debbie, did you have a question?
Can I just add on to that, that that total amount will be paid out of ARPA?
Yes.
That's your intention?
Yes, I'll amend it to include that that comes from the ARPA funding.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Steve's checkbook, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean, this ARPA money's one-time only, but sooner or later, we're gonna have to replace them, so.
They're eight years old.
This, this makes it a lot easier.
Yes, thank you all very much.
And you start saving for what, another eight years to do this again?
Yeah, 10 years is about the life, but there, the software's all updated as far as if you go with any of these, so you can't do any more.
So with the old machines, is there any trade in it?
There's a trade-in, 27,300, I think that's part of their discount.
Okay, okay.
The iPads will have to surplus, I would say, no big No Ink, I don't think so. We'll figure that out with Brian, I guess.
Yeah, probably so.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Okay, signing of subrecipient agreement with the City of Jefferson on the Fire Tower.
Ready to go? Okay, make a motion to sign the subrecipient with the City of Jefferson for the Fire Tower Hyde Park project in the amount of $300,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Signing of subrecipient agreement with the Missouri River Regional Library.
Make a motion to sign the subrecipient agreement with the Missouri River Regional Library for $75,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Signing of subrecipient agreement with the Salvation Army.
Okay. Make a motion to sign the subrecipient agreement with the Salvation Army in the amount of $100,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You have St. Thomas.
Okay.
Do you have the list of what order they're in?
Sign, signing of subrecipient agreement with St. Thomas the Apostle.
I'll make a motion to sign the subrecipient agreement with St. Thomas the Apostle for $50,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Signing of subrecipient agreement with the Osage Fire Protection District Infrastructure.
Okay, we've got two of them here. Um, I don't know if we need to- Okay. Make a motion to sign the subrecipient agreement with the Osage Fire Protection District for the infrastructure project in the amount of 25,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we did-
We've got the communication project next, okay. $1,201.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Signing of subrecipient agreement with Cole County Volunteer Medical First Responders.
Just keep rolling with these unless you want one, Harry.
No, you can have, you're doing a good job.
Make a motion to sign the subrecipient agreement with Cole County Volunteer Medical First Responder Squad for $133,290.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Signing of subrecipient agreement with River City Habitat for Humanity.
Make a motion to sign the subrecipient agreement with the River City Habitat for Humanity Home Building Project for $10,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
I'll just give you a little update on those two. We have received all of them except for two. One is the Village of Centertown, and the other one is the Capital City Soccer Club. I gave them till the 18th because we had a delay. The rest of them were all due last Friday, on the 4th, or whatever, yeah, 4th. And Centertown did request an extension, he's working on updating his application a little bit. So he was asking until the end of the month, and I told him I would ask you guys if that was okay.
This is for their wastewater?
Yes. They have a big, they had a big request, and they're waiting for the state to decide on whether they're funding part of this or not. And he was talking about changing his application to be just for maybe the design or engineering of this project. And so he was getting that together for me.
That's fine.
Just wanted to let you know those two are still out there. Other than that, we've seen the emails that went out to the ones today, giving them a copy of their actual contract, not these people, the people from before, and telling them all the details that is gonna be coming with the ARPA as far as, Forbes is coming up with a grant one-on-one to help us make sure these people comply with what they need to comply with. So we've been working very closely with Forbes and getting that done. We're a bit involved.
And while we're on that subject, Forbes, can you recap just quickly, round numbers of what we have been billed and paid?
Yeah, I was gonna ask for that.
At this point, we're still only at the $4,000 mark that we pay. I have asked them several times, and I've not seen an invoice. That was very old, and they're-
Very old being like a month old, two months old?
Oh, six months or more.
Really?
We haven't received a bill from them, probably.
Okay.
I may be off a little bit, but it's the beginning of this year for sure. And, you know, they changed companies from EKD to-
Well, they changed names.
Okay.
Yes.
And I guess their billing is handled by somebody different. That's the reasoning I got, so I do say there are bills yet to come from them.
But we are still not gonna be, we're close to the $600,000.
This is when we're really gonna start using them more.
Okay.
Is when the analysis of, do we have everything in order to pay out this money?
Right.
So, I don't know where we'll end up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Approval and signing of 2023 EMS education services with Lightbridge ED.
Morning.
Morning.
So last year, one of the first contracts we signed was for continuing education for our staff that's delivered online. We're very happy with that product. We did have some improvements and discussions that they have implemented for us, specifically moving more into some of the required training that we're gonna have to do yearly, like hazmat, HIPAA training, compliance, all of those sorts of things that we were using in a different manner. So now all of our education's going under one roof. The other really cool thing that they are doing for us this year is that they're going to build us our own training website that will not only be internal, but it will be a forward-facing website as well. So when we host CPR classes or stop-the-bleed classes, there will be a calendar on there where the public can sign up and register for those classes. And it will also allow us to pull credit card payments through that website, which has been a contention point for us trying to get our own credit card machine to accept those types of things. So this is killing a lot of birds with, with one stone. This is a 2023 budget item. However, they asked that we sign the contract now so they can get to work on building our website so that it will be ready to go January 1. They will not invoice us until after the first of the year. They just like the signed contract so they can get moving now, so.
Is this something first responders can use too, or for training for that? We've had a decline in our first responder membership, and I just, I think it's something that we have talked about, and is this something they'd be able to use and maybe to increase?
It, it would be. One of the difficulties that we had in, in the first iteration of this was all of the education was really high-level, critical care-type paramedic stuff. One of the challenges that I gave them over the last year was to develop some stuff for the lower licensures, which they have come back and done. So there are education offerings specific to the first responder EMT level-type training. Basically, all it is, is a subscription fee, sorry, I can't get that word out this morning, based on the number of users per month. So if we wanted to add people, that's simply registering and updating cost. So certainly a conversation that we can have with first responders as well.
Okay, I was trying to look at any ways to, to help with that because there are first response out- Okay, I was trying to look at any ways to, to help with that because there are first response out, especially in the far-reaching areas of the county, and, um, in particular, it was down in St. Thomas area. It's a lot fewer people now in that area, and it's a little farther to go. And it seems like for everyone you have a loved one that you're, that's having problems, so.
And so one thing that I didn't even think about, so if we get the system in place, all it would be, if they wanted to come on board, would just be a, uh, signup, and, uh, we could work out the, the financial aspect of it at that time.
Okay.
I think it'd be good.
Yep, good.
Do we have something to sign?
Yes, contract.
All right. I'll make a motion to sign the contract with Light Bright ED.
Be Flight Bridge.
I'm sorry, Flight Bridge, Light Bright, yeah, that's what's on my mind. Flight Bridge ED for the EMS, the twenty-twenty-three EMS Education Services.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I went out Monday, if anybody, if you haven't seen our new ambulance yet, it's, it's pretty amazing. So Chief is, I think, gonna bring it up here maybe in a week or two, and let's look at it. But it's, it's much, much, we got a lot more room in it than we do with our other.
Just a couple of transfers that I was gonna bring up. So I'm gonna run down and get a soda, can I use ARPA for that?
I'm only one, but no, where's my no button?
One is that moving money for insurance, and the other one is moving for board of prisoners, so. It's coming out of contingency. Thank you, I'll get out of here now before Debbie does shoot.
Go play in the street.
I can tell the election's over.
Okay, uh, Salvation Army Grant Application Support Letter Request, and I have it all ready.
I met last week with, uh, Major Justin Wendell and Greg Bexton, the volunteer. They asked that we consider a letter of support. They are applying for a Missouri Department of Economic Development Community Revitalization Grant Program Award. It requires a match, I think they have the match in place already, so we're one of several, uh, entities that are offering a, uh, letter of support. So I'll make a motion that we sign the Support Letter Request for the Salvation Army.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, renewal two with Fabic Cat for Heavy Equipment Maintenance.
This is the second renewal for twenty-twenty dash thirty with Fabic Cat, who provides heavy equipment maintenance repairs and parts, parts for the Public Works Department. Um, they had a few increases that were anywhere from two dollars to ten dollars, and then the rest of them stayed the same. Um, and Public Works is okay with renewing their services for another year. So our recommendation is to renew this for the second year with Fabic Cat, and I do have a renewal to sign.
Make a motion to sign the contract renewal for the Heavy Equipment Maintenance Repairing Parts with Fabic Cat.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bid award of twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-nine tires and miscellaneous services.
We bid out the tires for Public Works, and we only had one vendor who submitted a response, which was Pumps Tire Service. Um, Public Works was satisfied with their pricing, and our recommendation is to award twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-nine to Pumps Tire Service.
Usually have something to compare them to, you only have one price, so I have no clue. Y'all looked at it and. Have they seen? How come we only have one bid on it?
I sent it to three or four, and I sent the RFP to them and just said, hey, we have this out for bid, and we only got the one back. So, I, I don't know.
What's the name of the vendor?
Um, Pumps Tire Service.
P O M P S?
P.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm fine with them, unless, if y'all think the prices are reasonable and not out of range, I'm just curious why we don't have, we've got a lot of tire places around here.
Yeah.
Don't like doing, uh, bidding or, or what, so.
Maybe they don't like Eric.
Okay.
No, McKnight, and like, we had our house tires, and there were four last year, I don't remember.
Tyler, we've done work with Pumps for a few years at least, since they opened up.
I can't remember how long was that contractor we had last time? Can't remember how long the contract was we had the last time, was it like?
I think it was three years.
Three years?
So is that who we have it with currently?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
I'm fine with going with them, I'm just curious why we don't have more people bidding stuff? And I know people are pretty busy right now, or maybe they just, with the price, price fluctuations, they just don't wanna mess with it.
They may be concerned about, um, escalating costs on their side and not being able to recapture it on.
Do they have an escalation clause in there? Sorry.
I honestly don't.
Most of it, like, all your tires anyways, like your name-brand tires, they're on co-contract anyways. So really, the only thing they're bidding out is mostly is labor and recap tires, which we don't use that many of anyways.
Okay, yep, I'm good with it.
Go ahead.
Make a motion to award the tires and miscellaneous services for Cole County Public Works to Pumps Tire Service.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval and signing of Stormwater Management Maintenance Agreement.
So this agreement is part of the new stormwater ordinance, and this is the first one we've done since that ordinance went into effect late last year. Developments of one acre or more in urbanized areas as defined in the ordinance are required to provide stormwater runoff control. This development is Boxwood Lane, um, in Lakewood Heights subdivision section two, owned by Trademark Management, or Trademark Property Management, uh, which the owner of that is Pat McKim. Uh, this was presented to the Planning Commission in October, was approved contingent upon, uh, this agreement being signed. And, uh, it's a four-point-six-one acre, um, development that will consist of several small rental homes. It's directly above the, what I would say, the Apache Flats Ravenwood subdivision, where we've had some stormwater, um, issues more recently. Up of house bargains, um, put it in context of where it's at. And so this, this development through this ordinance, and what's required is they will have to mimic pre-site development, so they're not gonna contribute any more runoff to the area. And, um, as I said, this, it's required in our planning and subdivision regulations to do the, um, runoff control. The agreement actually ties the property owner as responsible for maintenance of that. And there's also provisions in there if they fail to meet, uh, that requirement. So we would recommend approval of this agreement. It is signed by the owner, also will be signed by the County Commission, signed by Sam, and notarized, and will be, have a recorded document. So, anybody have any questions?
This is one of the more serious, uh, locations, is it not?
It is.
It is.
Good.
Well, if we would have had this stuff in place forty, sixty, eighty years ago, we wouldn't be dealing with a lot of the stormwater issues, so it's. And, uh, Mr. McKim's been very good to work with.
Very good to work with, yes.
And he was kind of our test dummy for this round to see how our policy is written up, and I think everything's going well.
It is, yes, yeah, he's been fine, great to work with, and understands the process and has no issues with it.
Yep.
Good.
Yep, cool, thank you all.
You're welcome.
Okay.
So we need to.
So we need to sign.
We need, uh, to, uh, a motion to approve it and then to sign it.
So I'll make a motion to approve and sign the Stormwater Management Maintenance Agreement with Trademark Property Management LLC.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you need a copy of this, or?
Uh, I'll add that, um, the RFQs were received, or received from the five consultants on the stormwater runoff control projects we're working on. Received those last Friday, and we will evaluate and try to have answers or some decisions made by, before, before Thanksgiving.
Approval and signing of sub-award agreements for EMD Homeland Security Grants, Mr. Nicholas.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
I have two of them this morning, um, both through Homeland Security, the, uh, is there any particular order you're gonna start with? The first one I have here is for our enhancing community preparedness and resilience. Um, this will help, uh, replace the aging equipment on the cert, there's backpacks and equipment, uh, in there, like, uh, I, I don't wanna say medical, but there's, uh, you know, certain supplies in which within the backpack that the Community Emergency Response Team has, and, uh, they've aged out, and so we have a grant to replace those items. And the second one is to replace, um, oh, I'm sorry, it's, uh, the Protection of Soft Targets in Crowded Places Grant. And, uh, that's to replace our thermal, uh, small unmanned aerial unit of the drone. Uh, we currently have one that, um, is hooked up through a, uh, application on your phone or tablet, that, that company no longer exists. Therefore, the application no longer exists, so, uh, although the camera is on a drone, it, it doesn't work. And, uh, so this would, uh, replace that so that we can have the use of a thermal drone again for the, uh, Emergency Response Team. Yeah, and then there's, each one needs to be official.
So maybe a pretty, I mean, several.
I took the easy ones.
I don't have to missle each page.
Oh, yeah, that might help you.
The explanation or?
Make a motion to approve and sign the sub-award agreements for EMD Homeland Security Grant. The, uh, first one is for FY twenty-twenty-two State Homeland Security Program Protection of Soft Targets Crowded Places Award, number EMW dash twenty-two SS zero-zero-zero-nine-four dash two-eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
To get that done.
I didn't have the microphone for that either, but it's on now. No, it, it'll be in the minutes. We hope, uh, a motion to approve and sign a sub-award agreement for EMD Homeland Security Grant, FY twenty-twenty-two Homeland Security Program Enhancing Community Preparedness and Resilience, Award Number EMW dash twenty-twenty-two dash SS dash zero-zero-zero-nine-four dash four-six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any unfinished business? Okay, new business, accounts payable review. Okay, and we did the server, so Seal Coat Edge on Adams Street.
So I have a proposal from Precision Seal Coating Services for five hundred dollars to perform the work on two-oh-nine Adams. Uh, earlier this year, we overlaid the parking lot, but they could not overlay underneath the guardrail. So we had our seal coating contractor do the edge around that, and this is for the proposal to do that work.
Yep, I'm fine with it.
Me too. Motion to award, agree on the Precision Seal Coating Services, um, done at the, um, parking lot on two-ten?
Two-oh-nine.
Two-oh-nine Adams.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, signing of surplus title.
Well, I was asked to get you this title, it's the two-hundred, oh my God, two-thousand-and-thirteen Osage Ambulance, and we are.
Uh, this was the ambulance that Osage took for trade on the new ambulance.
Okay, sorry. Second.
This is the ambulance that Osage took on trade.
Yeah, I'm good.
Does it need a motion? Motion to sign the, uh, sign as a surplus title, the trade-in ambulance to Osage Industries for the new ambulance receipt from Osage Industries.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, do we have anything else?
So Debbie?
I do actually have one thing for you commissioners. I just found out earlier this week that, uh, Cole County did receive another grant from MODOT for their TEEP study for our ADA Transition Plan. So that will be coming to you in the near future.
Transportation Engineering Assistance Program.
Correct.
Whoa.
How much?
I was making sure I didn't miss here the tip or teepe.
How much is?
So the total we applied for, it's an eighty-twenty split, uh, we put in for fifteen thousand, we got the full amount, so the county will be responsible for three thousand of that.
Hey, you wanna explain what the ADA Transition Plan is, just, it's a, it's real broad.
Yep. So the ADA Transition Plan, we were supposed to have these done several years ago, um, and it's a plan for the county to be able to use moving forward with any new projects, any retrofits of any ADA items within the county. So this plan will help us prioritize which projects need to be done first.
Is that mostly sidewalks, or?
Sidewalks, facilities, it's anything the county owns.
Okay.
So.
So if anybody's got anything they think we need to address, now's the time to bring it to your attention, and, okay.
Seems like we're having a lot of doors and, uh, ramps and, uh, on the.
We're, we're kinda ahead of the game, you know, the Carnegie Building as an example, we are putting, we did put the ramp in. Um, so that's kinda putting the cart before the horse, so to speak. Um, but this plan will help us move forward with anything else that needs to be accomplished.
Typical line of the sidewalk on roadways, and it'll look at any areas where we have deficiencies, lack of curb ramps or two-steep, things like that, and have a plan going forward to retrofit that, and it doesn't say you have to do it right away, it just says, okay, when the next overlay comes about, that would be the time to do that.
And we have for years, anytime there's a major project for something, we have to, anytime we retrofit anything, we have to make sure it's ADA.
Correct.
Remembering so we don't run away and not include them.
Keep going up.
Well, you know, we're, we're doing something out at the Health. The city has some sidewalk issues whenever you do something, uh, adding sidewalks, you know. Truman has some sidewalks in certain places out there, doesn't it, Truman? Is, is there anything sidewalk-wise as we're doing that, uh?
City by ordinance requires, and I don't know the specifics, but if you do get a plat approved through the city, you have to add sidewalk along the roadway. Sometimes that stops at one property line and goes to the next, that's it.
Exactly.
I think there ought to be an overall plan that these tie together, but that's for them to, to figure out. Now, at the Health Department, I believe we have sidewalk near the bus stop down.
Now, at the Health Department, I believe we have sidewalk near the bus stop down on the side road that comes off of West Truman. But I don't think we have sidewalk going up the hill to the driveway, or going along the driveway up the hill to the building. So that would be something to think about. However, as we put this new driveway in, maybe the bus, I think some talk was the bus might go up and actually stop at the building, which might eliminate some of that need initially. But when you get into building sidewalks along steep grades, you gotta go through and make it only so steep and you have to have flat areas, so it can be challenging to get something up there that meets that requirement.
Yeah, I remember the plans. Yeah, that was, I also remember Greg Rollins, when he added on to, and here's this little strip of sidewalk, but there's no sidewalk anywhere else, it's just.
But this is something we've been needing to do for a long time and Matt submitted the application. We got awarded, so we'll go through the process and it'll be good to get this behind us.
Yep, let's keep looking for grants. We got Chief Hoy is looking for grants too, so that's good. Okay, anything else?
We did get an email from Debbie about sales tax this month, was up significantly, 11.38 and it's up 6.97 for the year, so that's good news. I think next year might still be up in the air.
Now we're gonna pay more for groceries.
It may have to do with a lot of that, people having to pay more in return of sales tax.
Don't think I have anything else.
Our next meeting's the 15th, but the following meeting is not the 22nd, it's the 23rd, right?
Yes.
Okay.
We're gonna go to the prayer breakfast first.
Oh, that's right.
And then come back and we'll be off, holy. Okay, anything else?
What time's the meeting on? Okay, it is 9:30, it's a little bit later.
Yeah, yeah, we moved it to, we have Bishop McKnight's, the speaker.
He can have a time limit too, he's not any special.
Okay.
Or she gonna sing for us?
Ken, I'm not sure where we are with the juvenile request for ARPA, but maybe we can get it up and down soon too, so.
I think there are some design, talking to Toby, she's been working with Architects Alliance?
I think that's a, probably a good idea. The last thing I saw was a note that it would be virtually impossible to operate during renovation.
Yeah.
Did I see that? Did you see that note?
Yeah, which means we would have to house them at other facilities, which could be very expensive.
You're gonna have to bite the bullet at some point, but if you're gonna renovate it, they're gonna have to have someplace else to go for time.
Or you just start over? With a greenfield and you build in a greenfield.
Yeah, that's what I'm kinda envisioning.
All right.
Okay, anything else? I would entertain a motion to recess.
Make a motion to stand in recess until 4:30.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I was gonna let you stay here until 4:30.
It's going on this one no vote for November.